And we are live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Councilmember Farrell Otto.
You're on mute, sir. There.
Councilmember Golumback.
He's here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Are we taking the item out of order, or, Mr. Chair?
We, I planned on starting at item number one unless you had a request to take it, an item out of order.
Well, I have a guess regarding the Citizens Review Board. If I could, it would take from the table number 20.
Okay, we will, we can start with that item then.
Thank you.
Item number 20, Establishment of a Citizens Review Board.
Items open.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been having some conversation regarding the reforms for our police department, and one of them was in creation of a Citizens Review Board. And we've had some conversation with Ms. Rolford from the executive director for the Syracuse, excuse me, the administrator for the Syracuse Civilian Review Board. And she's been very, very insightful, along with her partner, who, I believe, Mr. Peter McCarthy, who was the chair of the Syracuse Citizens Review Board. They've been in the news recently regarding some issues regarding the police department and the misconduct items in which they have 18 months to allow the Citizens Review Board to look into. But if they don't provide information to the board, those items cannot be looked into. So I want to give Ms. Rolford an opportunity to kind of give us a quick overview about the Citizens Review Board, how it operates, because I think that is something that could be very useful here in the city of Buffalo. If you can just say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rainette Rolford. I am the administrator for the Citizens Review Board since June of 2017. In attendance with me is Peter McCarthy, who is the chair of the board. We have been in existence since 1993. And then we were defunct for a period of time in 2010 and then reestablished in 2011. And some of the reasons why we were kind of dismantled in 2010 was because there was a lack of adherence to that current legislation related to the police department. And so there was a thought to redraft the legislation in order to attempt to address the concerns that had been provided. Some of those concerns had to do with the ability to have outside counsel, the ability to have a, the previous hearings were held publicly in the common council chambers, and they changed that. There was an issue related to subpoena power and whether or not the board would have independent subpoena power of the council and of the law department. So those were some of the changes in the legislation that occurred. Since then, we have been doing a uphill battle with regard to the adherence to our current legislation, although there was an attempt to try to meet the, and address the concerns that the PBA had with the CRB. We were still ne- never able to really get on board. I will say that since the new chief has been here, we have seen a change. Changes have been made with regard to the personnel that's in the Office of Professional Standards, which is known as IA. There have been a attempt to alleviate the need for the community to come to the police department when they file their complaint. So they've moved their complaint office or IA over to the same office building that the Citizens Review Board is in. So it's just down the hall from the Citizens Review Board. And an attempt, because our community has expressed grave concern related to going into the police department to file a complaint related to the police and running into, per se, the same officer they feel have been victimized, who has victimized them. So they deliberately moved that over. We have had issues, as Counselor Wyatt stated, related to the 18-month deadline for which officers can be disciplined based upon civil service. So we have had issues getting those cases. We have cases that are outstanding from 2017 through 2019 currently. And many of the 2017 cases are outside of the 18-month deadline. So the department has agreed to do an investigation with regard to those cases, although an officer technically cannot be disciplined. But they have said that they will do an investigation because the way that the legislation is set up, our investigation is not complete until we review their investigation. So in order for us to proceed further with regard to these cases, we need them to complete their investigation. And so that's it in a nutshell. But the complainant's file complaints related to misconduct that is a failure to act, demeanor, also known as conduct unbecoming. They also do excessive force. They do harassment, racial profiling and racial bias. They can also allege improper search, improper seizure, property destruction. Things of that nature are all the types of complaints that the board is able to see. Our board is made up of 11 members. Those members are appointed by the mayor's office. The mayor's office gets three. The common counselor, they get five appointments, and then we have three at-large counselors, and they get one apiece. So that makes up our 11-member volunteer board. Once, once the board is completed, currently, we do have a vacancy on the board from a particular council district. And the way the legislation is set up, we are able to recommend when a counselor does not appoint someone, we can appoint some, we can recommend someone after a period of time. So we are going to look into doing that. Once a complaint is filed, I am the primary investigator of that complaint. We do have $5,000 that we are allotted to a private investigator to assist with complaints. We average about 100 complaints a year. So typically with a $5,000 budget, the investigator typically handles maybe 10 cases out of the year, and I typically handle the rest. If the board decides after receiving my recommendation that they want the case to go to a hearing, a hearing panel is established, and that is a representative of an appointee from the mayor's office, a district counselor appointee, and also a at-large counselor appointee. And at the time of the hearing, we listen to the testimony of the complainants. We invite the officers to attend the hearing. And in egregious situations, we subpoena an officer to attend the hearing. And the reason why we subpoena them is because when we invite them by letter only, they do not attend. So it's necessary to move in that manner. Typically, when they are subpoenaed, they bring an attorney with them. And at that point in time, the attorney typically recommends that they not testify, and they don't even provide their name. What we've typically, typically been doing is when they come in, we will still state that these would be the questions that we would have at the time of the hearing if they were to provide any answers to those questions, so they are aware of what questions we still have. That is outstanding, but they typically still let us know that they are not going to testify. The council for the officers, however, uses this opportunity to provide, in their mind, you are able to assess the credibility of a complainant. And in their mind, currently, they believe that addressing the complainant's criminal background is a way to establish credibility. Now, we have had some back and forth with regard to whether or not we are entitled to a person's criminal background. And typically, we were provided with that information, and we have since been advised that we are not privy to that information. So therefore, when the attorney for the officer is providing that information, it's many times the first time we are seeing that information. And we don't believe that because a person's criminal history could be lengthy, or it could be short, or it could have certain allegations, that that is a credibility assessment unless there is some sort of charge of perjury or something of that nature. So typically, the focus of our investigation and the complaint has to do with the handling of a particular person at the time of an arrest, at the time of an interaction. So the complainant's history and what happens in court is typically not on our radar for us to have, you know, for us to look at it in length as we've been provided. So the hearing panel was able to make recommendations of policy and training recommendation, and also discipline in those cases in which we substantiate cases. The discipline, final discipline, is up to the chief to provide that discipline to the officer. And if he disagrees with our findings, he is supposed to advise us at that point in time why he disagrees.
Mr. Chair? Because she can, she can go on and on because she got so much information. But I wanted, because I know there was one issue that some of the folks who have been protesting have been talking about, and that's the independence of this body. So if Mr. McCarthy could talk about the independence of the board and how it's worked with his experience over the last three years, I think that could be very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, I think one of the things you were asking about is the board members' responsibilities, to whom are they responsible, how were they chosen, and so forth. And that was a big issue when the CRB was first formed. So the way the board is set up, there are 11 volunteer board members, including myself. And they are chosen by the mayor and the common council in the following way. The mayor or his designee gets to choose three of the CRB members. The city is divided for council into five districts. So there are, on the common council, there are five district counselors and three at-large counselors. Each district counselor gets to choose one CRB member. So they're spread out across the neighborhoods of the city in terms of representation. And then the last three CRB members are chosen by the council at large. So there was a real intention there to make sure that there is wide representation. And the counselors, I have to say, have done a pretty good job at choosing people who will be careful, thoughtful, and reasonable in their decisions. The board right now is, is about half-black and half-white, a variety of ages, a variety of backgrounds. And in the daily operation of the board, we don't pay much attention to who appointed who. In other words, I don't represent the mayor, even though the previous mayor appointed me and the current mayor reappointed me. It's not something we think about. It is a requirement, and this was in the original legislation, that when we, when the board chooses to send a case to a hearing, as Rainette talked about, we set up a hearing panel, a panel of three people, and they will be one merril appointee, one district appointee, and one at-large appointee. So there are some built-in guidelines to make sure we have wide representation. Our city council, I'll give you one detail. Our city council is all Democrats with one Republican. The one Republican on the council chose one of our CRB members, and that member is not anti, excuse me, is not totally pro-police any more than anybody else. Everybody takes really a conscientious look at every case to decide whether or not there should be a hearing. We also have one retired police officer on the board, and sometimes there are differences of opinion. But again, that, that board member is not, is not totally supportive of the police every time. He brings a different viewpoint. So it's critical, and I think this is what Counselor Wyatt was interested in yesterday. It's critical when the CRB members are chosen that there's an effort to choose people who will take the responsibility seriously. Does that address your question, sir?
Yes, it does. Thank you. So I know that we have a long agenda, but I wanted to give them an opportunity. And I don't know if any, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, if anyone has any questions, but it's up to you. But thank you both for coming on, and maybe we can have another meeting to, so the colleagues can have a further conversation with you.
Absolutely. If available.
Thank you very much. Any questions from councilmembers? Okay, motion to table. Is that, motion to table by Councilmember Wyatt, seconded by Majority Leader Rivera. From the top.
Item number one, eliminate 2018 traffic fees and address unequal traffic enforcement in Buffalo.
This item is open. I believe there is someone here to speak on it.
Mr. Chair, we've been joined by Andrea and a number of her colleagues as well to speak on this item. Also, for the record, we have been joined by councilmembers Bowman and Scanlon.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So my name is Jolanda Hill. And Andrea Osu-Lavon, she has been supporting the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition in our efforts to eliminate these 13 traffic fees. Because this issue was voted number one on PBG's community agenda, so make that clear. So yeah, so as I said, I represent the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition. And the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition is also a part of Free the People. And so reforming fines and fees was also a part of Free the People's 13 demands. So yeah, so just to give you some background on this campaign. Past year, the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition has been raising awareness around traffic fines and fees and biased traffic enforcement practices here in Buffalo. And, and really connecting it to like how the collection of fines and fees are connected to police violence, unnecessary traffic stops and searches, poverty, and how relying on fines and fees as a source of revenue distorts justice and lead to this extracting of resources disproportionately from Black and Brown communities. What has been a priority for us is really pushing this campaign to eliminate the 13 traffic fees that were enacted in 2018 that drivers have to pay along with their traffic tickets. And so these fees range from a $55 public safety fee to a $100 administrative fee. Yeah, and these fees are like on the city of Buffalo's website, like if you want to look at them for reference. And we've also sent everyone around a memo that links them. So I just really want to get into like why these fees should be eliminated. Reason is like, these fees are the highest in the state. Like, there's no other city in the entire state of New York that has fees this high. So that is like problematic within itself. And it kind of shows like how the city of Buffalo's like fees are excessive. And the other thing is that there's like this racial component to the enforcement of fines and fees. So there's racial disparities in like who is paying these fees and who is being ticketed. And so just to give you some statistics, I think I spoke to a few councilmembers one-on-one, but I haven't been able to speak to everyone. Drivers who live in majority-black neighborhoods in Buffalo are eight times more likely to receive a traffic ticket. So that means they're going to have to pay this ticket along with those fees. And, and drivers who live in majority-black neighborhoods are also more likely to have their, four times more likely to have their licenses suspended. And that's like another reason why like these fees should be eliminated because people just can't afford to pay the tickets along with these fees, and then they lose their license. And then it's just like a whole mess of like unnecessary interactions with law enforcement. Relying on fines and fees undermines public safety. So when a city is relying on ticket revenue, it pushes the police in this role of like tax collector rather than like public safety officer. And that's like a problem. And so the other reason why is because relying on fines and fees criminalize, criminalizes vulnerable communities, and it can lead to police violence. So when an officer is out in a community and like their goal is to like, or they're targeting certain communities for these, for these really low-level offenses, what happens is it increases the amount of time that, it increases the, the level of interactions that the community is having with the police. And a lot of times, you know, it can lead to instances of like violence. So let me see, relying on fines and fees is an unreliable source of revenue. Evident in the fact that like the city of Buffalo issues a ton of like civil judgments every year. Kind of shows that like people just can't afford to pay these fees. And so the city is actually losing more money trying to collect this, to collect revenue from like the poorest residents in the city. And so it's just not sustainable, and it's like counterproductive. And so, let me see, and then the other reason is like fines and fees are being reformed across the country. Have cities like Durham, North Carolina, where they recently implemented a program that waives old traffic fines and fees because a lot of the residents just can't afford to pay. And then you have legislators like Senator Tim Kennedy, who introduced a bill that would no longer suspend people's licenses because they can't afford to pay fines and fees. Zip code, I think 14215, had over 5,000 suspended licenses in 2016. And that's a predominantly like black and brown area. And that's like very concerning. And so, yeah, the mayor even recognizes that low-level moving violations can cause economic hardship and that unpaid tickets can become another source of negative interaction with the police. So I don't know if you want to add to that, Andrea.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jolanda, and thank you, councilmembers, for having us today as well. I'm Andrea Osu-Lavon, Director at Partnership for the Public Good, and we have really been following the leadership of Jolanda and other members of the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition in digging into this issue. And, you know, one real basic thing I want to add upfront is even the difference between a fine versus a fee, right? This group, for now, is really looking to address the 13 fees that were added in 2018. The fines, which are the monetary penalties attached to different tickets and offenses, would remain unchanged, and really, fees are often there as a surcharge to, to boost revenue. And that's really what this group is, is most concerned with at this time. And as Jolanda said, even before the COVID-19 pandemic and this national movement for racial justice, our partners at the end of last year identified this issue, the repeal of the 13 new fees, as the most important issue for the year, and for a whole range of reasons, it's even more important now. As you all know, and I know, have been talking about for many hours, almost every day, the COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately impacted certain neighborhoods in Buffalo. And these are the same zip codes and city blocks that have long faced health disparities and that have carried the burden of this disproportionate fines and fees ticketing as well. And I would just, you know, really invite you to look at the memo that we submitted, especially page six to seven, where we include a chart that compares Buffalo's traffic fee structure to other cities across New York State. As Jolanda mentioned, Buffalo has more fees as well as higher fee amounts than other cities in New York State. So when you add together the public safety fee, a driver responsibility fee, administrative fees, late fees, of course, not all these are, are applied all at once, but we have a possibility of $890 in possible fees that could be added onto your fine. And when you look across that chart, in other cities, the amounts are far less. For example, in Rochester and Binghamton, there are no administrative fees, public safety fees, or driver responsibility fees added to traffic violation fines. Albany imposes an administrative fee of $25, but none of the other fees found in Buffalo. And Syracuse imposes only a $5 administrative charge. And so given the economic crisis that we're in, the calls to reduce disparities that are very widespread and that I know you're listening closely to, we would like to see these fees repealed at this time. It's also important to note that since they were added to the city code in 2018, and the fees are also listed in our memo, a chart of them, they have not all been implemented either. Some of them have been routinely added to tickets, and others have never been implemented. So we also feel it's a good time to remove them before they are all systematically added. And, you know, we just want to acknowledge, we know that we're coming to you at a time of great deficit, a year of financial concern. And while the COVID-19 pandemic has created this deficit for Buffalo and many municipalities, you know, we believe, and many local governments, including Mayor Brown in recent weeks, are stepping forward to say, you know, cities have to resist the urge to fill these budget gaps with monetary penalties that, that mostly harm residents of low-income and residents of color.
Thank you for your comments. Did any of the, my colleagues have any questions? Council President Pridgen.
Thank you, and thank you to the guests for being in. I have met with them. They have a compelling argument, especially for those fees that are not being put on. I'd like to have somebody from the administration, possibly Mr. Chair, in your next meeting to come on and talk about those fees, and especially the fees that we are not putting on tickets, about the possible elimination of those and the adjustment of some of these fees. So I would, I would like to have somebody on from the administration to be able to discuss that.
Any other questions when we're here? I did, I want to thank Jolanda. I know we met a week or two ago. And I think you did a very great job at the meeting of compiling all of the items that you wanted to talk about today, and then following up and sending out that information to everyone before you spoke on it today. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
And if, Mr. Chair, if we could, in the meantime, maybe have, and I know they have already compiled it and put footnotes and everything together. But if we possibly could get that information to us early, if council staff can get that, so that we're, from the administration of what fees they're using, what fees they're not. And then that way, when the administration does come before this body, we have some information already and can, can look at this and not just leave it hanging on a tree for years, but we'd be able to move on it.
Okay. Motion to table by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Golumback.
Item number two, letter in support of Horn's pension status and eligibility.
I think the Majority Leader is on mute, but the motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number three, supplemental info regarding special use permit six Highgate.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number four, 3148 Main Street.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number five, special use 55 Rhode Island.
Motion to... Let me look at this one. I recommend that we send that one without recommendation.
Okay. Sorry, yes, Malcolm?
Councilmember, this is one that is set for a public hearing on July 20th.
Okay, so it's a public hearing. That's fine, then. Motion to table.
Motion to table, items five.
And six.
Six, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number seven, public database for police stop reports.
Items open.
This item is filed by Council President Pridgen.
Mr. Chair, I think we're, we're just waiting on the feedback from police. I know we've had a lot of requests in front of them, so we're just waiting on the feedback. So if we could table.
Okay. Motion to table, seconded by Council President Pridgen. Motion to table, seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number eight, report on body cam policy.
Items open.
This is another one that I would just ask to be tabled. This is really trying to find out. We, we did get a report that the cameras are being turned off during some stops. And we really need to hear from our police department. I know we had them on earlier. We didn't want to tie up their entire day, but about that policy. So if we can, Mr. Chair, if you allow, in our next meeting, this would give them time to come back to us with an accurate answer about the police body cams, because they should be on whenever they are interacting with the public. But I'm hearing from attorneys that when they go to court, that oftentimes the answer is the camera was off without any explanation of why. And I think that's counterproductive to the reason that we wanted the cameras there in the first place. So if we could have someone from the police department in your next meeting to discuss this and bring us the answers. Thank you.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number nine, public availability of labor contracts with the City of Buffalo.
Items open.
Majority Leader, Mr. Chair, I have my hand up for the previous item.
Motion revisit the previous item.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt. Where's the floor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because we went through the process when we established the body cams and working with the Police Advisory Board, we were looking for some type of recommendations or guidance from the police department when these cameras would be on and off and those type of things. I don't think we ever received that. And again, after talking, talking, speaking to the police department earlier, there are some things that we've requested that we, again, don't get. And this is part of the issue. There should have been something that was documented that if officers are not putting the cameras on, or if there's times that they would have, we know that if they go to the restroom, they shouldn't have a camera on. But this is stuff that we should have taken care of when we first put this in place, and we missed it. They did not respond to our request. But I'm really hopeful that at the next meeting, that they have a thorough explanation to why this would be. Because this is kind of systemic of the problems that we're having with policing. And that there's a level of trust that we're trying to establish with the community. And this was a big part of it, and this council was very much in the forefront of requesting those body cams because we wanted to try to improve the relationship. So again, thank Council President for putting it forth, forth. And I'm hopeful that at the next meeting, we'll get a thorough explanation to as to why the cameras would not be on at a particular time. Thank you.
Motion standing.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski. Next item.
Item nine, public availability of labor contracts in the City of Buffalo.
Items open.
Mr. Chair, if we could just table that, we're still waiting for response. I'm not real sure if we have to even wait for response on this. It was approved by the Common Council, and this would be about all labor contracts being public. And also, this does not include anything about negotiations. It is just once the contract is ratified, and also whatever comes to the Common Council. As we saw in our previous meeting today, you know, the, the wording in these contracts and those type of things are very, very important. And so that's what this calls for. I'm not sure, and I think we do have Corporation, we do have Corporation Council on the line. Because we have already voted for this, is there anything else that we need to trigger and ensure that contracts now become public?
This is Karen Gordon, Assistant Corporation Counsel. I don't believe so. I think the most, I, I guess we can do from here is to make sure that all departments moving forward have a copy of this so they know what it is that the council have approved as its policy moving forward. Granted that most of the departments probably, you know, are in practice of sending through the entire contract in the past, but it would be good to send this approval, new policy to them, so they also have that to refer to if necessary. Thank you.
Would it at all need any adminis- approval from the administration?
No, not in this instance.
So, so, Mr. Chair, I think what I would ask in this instance is to direct council staff to send out a copy of the approved resolution to all departments. I mean, yeah, all of the departments that would have a union contract. Also to send this to our MIS department. And of course, a copy to the administration. And then we could, after comment, table this to just ensure that it, it is done within a timely manner. Thank you.
Motion to table.
Before that, Councilmember Wyatt, did you have something on this item?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a short conversation before this meeting with Corporation Council and one of the attorneys. And I think it will be helpful, as we talk about police reform, to have a conversation with them about some of those reforms, why they're in the process of negotiation, so that we understand the, what's going on. Because currently, we don't. What I was told is that the police contract is 800 pages. They used to perform good little booklets together, but they haven't done that in a while. But I think that it would be good for us while they're negotiating so that they are aware of some of the things that we would like to see, instead of us waiting to the very end. So I did, as the Council President or Majority Leader would reach out to our Corporation Council so that we could have that meeting, not a public meeting, but maybe four of us at a time so that they can explain, because they, they explained some things to me that I wasn't aware of. Even today, on our conversation regarding the take-home vehicles, some of those things are in the contract, but we've never seen the entire contract. 800 pages, I don't know how we would get through that. But some of the things that we've talked about as far as reforms, we should be aware of some of the barriers that may prevent it right now so that we can look at whatever our, our plan is to address it. Because some of it may be things that we can address in the contract, some of it may be things that we have to address with the state. But I think time, you know, for right now, while we're having these conversations, we should have those conversations with Corporation Council so that we are aware of what we can and what we can't do. And what we, even if we can't do it, let's, you know, find out what approach we should take to make sure that it's on the radar for us to, to make these things happen. Because we have a lot of dialogue, but there's nothing that's really kind of planned other than our resolutions on what we like to see. So that's just, just, you know, just so that, I think that we can try to make that happen. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And concerning what Councilmember Wyatt said, I agree. And I know that, yeah, I have a message that the PBA is reaching out to the council within the last couple of days to talk about what are those type of items. And I think it's very important that we, we are able to express, because we hear a lot of people from the community say, you know, you got to change contract. I totally agree. But what are those items? Is what they are, they're, they're asking now, which I, which I think is phenomenal for them to say, let's, let's have a conversation. And so there, there is some movement to talk about it. And I think that the more detail we have, because we can throw things against the wall and hope it sticks. But what is the detail of that? And I totally agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I need to speak on the previous item, so I can wait a moment.
Okay.
So mo- motion is to table this item?
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Motion to go back to the previous item.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Scanlon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just with regards to the Buffalo Police Department and their body camera policy, I think it was mentioned that we never received the policy. The council actually did receive a policy. We, we moved on it last year. I understand if council members want to look at it and possibly amend it. I think we should always be looking at these types of policies and seeing how we can approve upon them once they're initially implemented, and we see what's working, what's not working. But I just did want to make it clear that it did actually come through the council last year.
Okay, thank you for that. Motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item 10, Police Department ad hoc information request.
Items open.
Chief of Staff.
He probably didn't hear you.
You were cut off at the first part.
I said, have we gotten anything, have any correspondence from the police department at all?
I've not received anything on this yet, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to do what Council President is doing. We're going to give them opportunity to get back to us in hopes that we'll see something at our next meeting, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
So we'll table the item, motion to table by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Take from the table, is it item 20?
Yes, sir, it's items 20, 27, 28, and 29.
20, 27, 28, and 29.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item 20, establishment of a citizens review board.
Items open.
We already took care of that one.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 27, special use permit 105 camper.
Motion to receive and file, items 27, 28, and 29.
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
We have one more item, sir. Do we have one more item?
Item is that?
Because Mr. Gibson is here to talk about that item. Malcolm, did you give him the right meeting? This is, it should be, that should have been for community development. He should be on for community development.
Yes, he's on for the next meeting, sir.
Okay. This is the tired time.
So that's a two o'clock meeting?
Yes, the next one.
Thank you for joining us for this meeting.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.